Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session. And Mr. Coates.
Mr. Simmons, Mr. Coates has asked me to review that with you all. It is, I'm sorry, it's there, Kathy, I apologize. It is item C on your consent agenda, and it is related to electrical service for construction and permanent service for the fueling station at Terrace Street that is under construction. And you see the amount there of $4,339.67. And this is from Keaton Electric there to establish electrical supply to the fueling station.
Okay, anybody have any questions for him?
Yes, sir, $4,339.67.
All right, next, Mr.?
No, no, it's not a change order. He just asked me to present that because he's not here.
Tab?
Afternoon, Ted, coal, gas, and water. I have one change order on the agenda in the amount of $5,183.64. This is for the addition of a fire hydrant at the request on the Rickwood Road Utility Relocation. This is at the request of the Fire Department to basically insert a hydrant in an area that is needed. We have one up around Simpson's Body Shop, then we have one, I think it's Earl Street, if I'm not mistaken. And so Ryan requested that while we're doing this project that we put this hydrant in place. The city, the Water Department will pay for the fittings and the hydrant assembly. The $5,183.64 is just for the labor for the contractor who's performing the utility relocate to put this in. We will provide them with all the fittings and the hydrant itself.
So are we providing all of the supplies and materials?
Yes, we're providing all the materials for this, for the hydrant, just for this particular piece.
So this is a labor cost only?
Labor cost only.
Am I understanding you, Tab, this is a third hydrant, or it is just relocating one of the two hydrants?
This will be a third, this will be an additional third hydrant that basically will split the difference between the two existing hydrants. But it will greatly improve protection in that, in that area.
So in between Simpson and Earl, where is it going to go?
It's actually gonna be, it's gonna be in the front yard of the gas department's department, right there, the gas department headquarters.
Okay.
And it's gonna be on the south side of the road. Originally called for to be on the north side of the road, but the line that's being relocated is gonna be on the south, so we didn't figure there was any sense in open cutting that road and going through additional cost. So Ryan agreed to that, we're just gonna have it on the south side. It'll be right in front of the, or in the vicinity of the admin building for, for gas department.
Okay. So Tab, are you, anybody having additional questions for him?
Yeah.
Tab, why are you up here? I need you to address something and explain something, how it all works. And there's been a lot of conversation, got it, was quoted conversations in regard to the Northwood sewer situation out there.
Sure.
And I know we've been working on this and working on this tirelessly, and we're almost, I think, at it. But do you mind explaining what's going on out there?
Sure.
The city's position, how all this worked, and what was done today, and where we are at this moment, please? Thank you.
So, we informed the residents back some time ago that when they had an overflow that occurred, we informed them that the line was failing. You know, the line is old, and we informed that it is privately owned, informed them that it's privately owned and privately maintained. It runs in front of their, in front of the businesses, and I'll refer to it as the set of buildings across the street from Paycase Hardware. I'm a, Paycase Hardware just makes sense to me because we buy off supplies and stuff there. So it runs, it runs parallel in front of their business, ties into our, the City of Florence sewer system, right to the south of a landscape bed, if you will. It ties into our system there. So everything from that point going north is privately owned and privately maintained. So last week, they had another overflow, and we, you know, basically explained to them that it was theirs, that it was their responsibility to take care of it. So they started working on getting quotes. So they got a quote from, from a company, and of course, it was pretty substantial because of the amount of paving that was gonna have to be done because the line actually lies in the street. And some, some felt that it was a city issue or a water, gas, or Water Department issue because the line is in the street, and that's not accurate. We have blueprints that, that, of course, precedes my time as manager, but we have blueprints that when the Street Department still maintained the sewer system, that this line was private at that time. So even on the blueprints as far back as when the Street Department maintained the sewer system, it was deemed a privately owned, privately maintained sewer. So, and with all this that's been going on, we have sent dispatcher crew two times. The first time, the, the residents and the business owners had a company come out and jet or rod the line out to stop it from overflowing. Once they completed that, we sent a dispatcher crew out, they went and did a wash down and also disinfected the area, trying to get everything up as much as possible, and then also disinfected it. It overflowed again with all the heavy rains, everything that we've had lately. Of course, it didn't take it long, and it started to overflow again. So we worked today, we actually sent a truck out. We don't have the equipment to work on a four-inch line, and that is the size of the line that's in the street. We, the smallest that we have, that we could work on is a six-inch. So, but we actually went out and we pulled the lid to where the access point is for this four-inch line, and we backed everything that we could, and we allowed the water to basically backflow out of that line, and we sucked it out, we backed it out as it came out of the line. Got the overflow stopped, and once we got the overflow stopped, we covered everything, everything backed up, and we did another wash down and another disinfection of the area. And that's where we currently stand. So as of right now, it's not overflowing. It has been washed down, it has been disinfected, and that was about an hour and a half ago that I received a confirmation from our crews that were on site, that all that had been taken care of.
When the owner goes back to replace a line, are they required to go back with at least a six-inch line, or will they have to go back with a four-inch?
It'll, it'll be up to them. It's privately owned and privately maintained. They will need to put a big enough line in that will be able to convey everything that's being put into the, into that line. Currently, it's a four-inch line, and a four-inch line will be sufficient. We did, I did have a conversation with one of the residents, and they think that there is a, there is a point, or what we, what we call a point repair that would need to be done somewhere in the vicinity of that landscape bed that juts out into the, that basically distinguished was the lane of traffic from the parking spaces.
So the whole line has not collapsed?
That is our understa-
Somewhere to an issue I had, it's out of the point of-
Right, that is our understanding. We don't have, there again, we, we, we cannot access a four-inch line, we don't have any equipment. So our camera will not go down that line, so we don't have any video proof, if you will, we don't have anything other than just what we've been told by, by the, by the residents, the customers, by the residents and business owners, that, but they do feel like, I think it was 110 feet in, they hit something. And so my best guess, you know, being 27 years in this profession, is that it's PVC to a certain point, then it turns into clay. And where that, that transition point is now, the clay is either broken, collapsed, or settled.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's created, you know, it's distorted, and that's what's causing, causing the issue. They think it's in and around that landscape bed.
Yeah.
So of course, we advised them, hey, if you think that's your problem, just dig it up right there and, and try to replace it. And we'll work with them as far as the landscape bed and everything is concerned, and try to, try to work with them as far as that goes, yes.
Um, Tab, what's the long-term solution here? Like, yes, you've said they've had people come out, yes, you have said they are getting estimates, but A, you're having to go out over and over again, so what's their next step to rectify and truly resolve this issue?
If they-
And how we're doing this, and the timeline?
Okay, if they can identify, and I'll just use even numbers, but if it's 150 feet of pipe, and let's just say they deemed 110 feet of it is PVC, that section is more than likely fine. They can, they can bring a camera in it, and they can check it. What they need to do is they need to, they need to fix the other 40 feet, and I don't know if it's 40 feet, I'm just using those numbers as, as an example. But my best guess is, is where the joint between PVC and clay, the, the, the joint has failed, it's settled, collapsed, broken, for whatever reason, age, more than anything. And what they need to do now is they need to replace that, that 40 feet, is what they need to do. That would be a sure fix.
How soon are they gonna do this?
Well, it's my understanding, after speaking with one of the residents today, they have contacted two different companies, actually three different companies, and they're, they're basically at the, at the mercy of those, of those companies now. They're waiting on them to come on site and look at it, give them an estimate, and then, you know, perform the work. So they're kind of at the mercy of the, of the plumbing companies that have been contacted. It's my understanding that one was coming today, one is coming tomorrow, one has already been on site.
Okay, but the time, we've been dealing with this, the time has run out.
Sure.
And it's like I told y'all, I've spent many hours on this again today. The time, we, we can't keep on kicking the can down, and not when I said we, I don't necessarily, but we can't keep kicking the can down, Rob. Something has to be done, and it's gotta be done now.
Absolutely.
Um, if this overflow again, we can't keep having this, and I'm not blaming you, because I want to say thank you all for everything that you all have done. Keep going at it at the drop of the dime, so I want to say thank you for always taking my call and getting out there immediately, even though contrary to some thing, I haven't done anything. I've done all that I can do as a council person. I don't have the authority to dispatch you out.
Right.
Because you don't work for me.
Right.
Even though I, I beg you to, but it still has to come from a higher authority than me, because you don't work for me. But what, what do we do next? We can't keep waiting all these days because this issue did, did not just start. So if, I know you said, well, waiting on this one, we're waiting on that one, but what if this happens again tomorrow?
Right, if it happens, you know, it, the next step, if, if this continues to be an issue and it's not resolved, you know, and, and that, that timeframe, I cannot identify, that of course would be up to you all to, to say, alright, we're gonna give them 24 hours, 48 hours, six weeks. I don't know what the timeframe is, of course, six weeks is an exaggeration, that's way out of the question. But let's just say you give them 48 hours, and if they don't have a resolution within 48 hours, then it is in the ordinance, the city ordinance, the code, that we can go out as a department and we can shut the water off to those customers, to those businesses. If you shut the water off at the water meter, there's no water returning, you go into the sewer to cause an overflow. So it is, it is within our power to do that. But like I said, that would have to be something that would, you know, and we, we don't care to do that. Uh, we wanna try to work with the customers as much as possible, and I think we have, and I think they understand, you know, the, the conversations that I've had with, with all of them, I think they understand exactly where we're coming from. Because it, it becomes a, it becomes an environmental problem now, because now you're affecting other folks, not just them, but you're affecting other folks in that immediate area. And so, and we have, we have, I will say this, we have talked, we have spoken with the Health Department, Florida County Health Department, so they are well aware of the situation.
Have they been on site?
Not to my knowledge, no ma'am. Not to my knowledge. And they have been in, it's my understanding that the Health Department has been in conversation with the Building Department, which ultimately would be the one to enforce any action, you know, as far as like food, restaurants, that type of thing. So, but it is within our powers, in our ordinance, that we can go out and we can shut the water off to these businesses at, at whatever time we deem necessary.
This is a private line.
Okay, okay.
This is a line that comes from their business to our system.
Correct, there's a four-inch line that runs, if you will, in the parking spots in front of those businesses, and each one of those businesses has a line that comes in and ties into that line. And it, it, and it's not, we, we, we don't think it's anything to do with the lines individually coming from each business, we think it's to do with the four-inch line that lies in the, underneath the parking area. And like I said, it's a, it's a transition there somewhere from PVC to clay, we think, or what we've been told.
Our line runs, but-
Yes, yes, we inspected all of ours just to be 100% sure. All of that's done, we have TV logs on all of that.
Mr. Simmons, can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, it's my understanding, normally for a, for a business or an individual, everything up to the meter, if you were, would be my obligation. In this case, there's a lateral, just like you said, each business attaches to that.
Correct.
So normally, that lateral would be ours, but in this case, that's actually private, and, and we're not sure what those attachments are. They could be clay too, or they could somewhere have been replaced with PVC.
Right, that, that's, that's accurate. We, we don't have any idea exactly what those, the, the service laterals coming off of the four-inch lateral, we don't know what they are composed of either, simply because we don't have the equipment to go and access that. You would have to use something, what they call a push camera, to do this, and it's just basically a camera, and it's just on wire, you know. Our camera is what they call a crawler, and it's so big by so tall, therefore it hasn't, you know, it, it can't go in a four-inch pipe physically, you can't fit it in. And so six is a small, and it's actually a pretty tight fit for, for a six-inch pipe. Most of the time, it's used with eight-inch or larger. But it actually crawls, it has a revolving camera that you can look at different directions. And we actually, in the process of, of evaluating our part of the system, we actually looked at the inlet, the lateral where it comes in from them, that four-inch where it comes in, and the connection coming into the main appears to be fine, according to what we saw on our camera. I agree with their assessment, at some point, whether that's 40, 30, 40, 50 feet away from the main, there is a, there is a distortion there, there is a separation, more than likely caused by collapse or age, or, or, you know, it could be a number of things.
And I know that there's several businesses out there on that side, and I know that, I know for a fact that there's two businesses that it's not on there, and I think that theirs go to the back.
Theirs go to the rear, yes.
So, and by no means do I ever want anybody's business to be affected, or certainly, I don't want them to be shut down. I don't. But I know we've got to get a handle on this.
Right.
For everybody in environmental safety purposes, and this has been going on a little bit too long.
Why, sometimes.
So tell me this, how many businesses are affected?
It's either-
Just say hypothetically, if you had to shut the water off.
It would be eight or nine. We would have to identify for sure which of the businesses in that row of businesses go out the back, if you will, go out to the rear. We've even had a conversation with some of the, some of the residents about rerouting their sewer, just leaving the street alone and trying to reroute the sewer out the back. But because of elevation differences, some of them would require pumps, tanks and pumps in order to be able to pump it. Plus, you have to think, if all of their plumbing is designed and going out the front of the business, it's gonna be a complete redo on the inside as well to make it go out the rear. So there's, there's gonna be more cost, in my opinion, there's gonna be more cost associated with that than just replacing what is there and fixing their current problem, what is there.
Tab? Oh, so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Let me ask one question.
Sure, sure.
And can you explain to everybody, and I know that you have shared with us, why is it that the city, why can't we legally fix this?
We can't legally fix this because we can't take ratepayer funds, which is what my department is funded, we have ratepayer funds. It's our, in our ordinance, we can't take ratepayer funds and replace privately owned, privately maintained sewer. If that was the case, we would be taking funds and we would be replacing up to 18,000 service laterals throughout our city, that's about how many sewer customers we have, rounded off. So at any given day, we could have one of the 18,000 customers say, hey, I need my, my sewer lateral has collapsed, you need to come replace it. And that's just absolutely impossible. So that's the reason we have that protection in place. The homeowner, the homeowner or the business owner is responsible for their section. Now, if this, you know, if this is a main, sure, we're out there on it, we've got a point repair made, and, and we're out in, you know, a few hours. But, you know, this is something that is privately owned, privately maintained, and therefore, we can't fund it, we can't replace it.
I lived this reality just a few months ago.
Tab?
You see well knows.
You mentioned the ordinance and enforcement of it, have, A, have we ever had to do that before?
In my tenure, in the year and a half that I've been manager, no ma'am.
Okay.
We've never had to do it. I actually spoke with another individual in our department, and he's been with the department for a long time, and his recollection is that it's never been done before, did.
Okay, and how long is it in the ordinance that it says that we have, that we can do that?
There's, there's not a time, a specific time mentioned. It, it mentions that it would be up to the council to make that decision, make that determination.
Should this go on, and we, if we're not to be repaired, then we could step in at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
If you, if you all deem 48 hours, I'm just using that as an example.
To repair?
To repair, to have everything completely done and repaired.
Okay.
If you, you know, if you deem, like I said, I use six weeks while ago, that's, that's an exaggeration. Of course, we, we, we can't, this can't go on for six weeks. And, and the, and the, and the residents, they all know that, and they all understand.
Let me, let me say this from experience, you really can't, I mean, you can give 48 hours to at least have it scheduled to be done, because like my situation I had, it took them 10 days before they could get there.
Yes.
To, to get to work on it. So I think, you know, if we had to go that route, at least have it scheduled to be done.
Yes, and I agree, and I, I feel like, I honestly feel like, based on some of the conversations that I've had earlier today with some of the, some of the residents, I call them customers because they are, they are our customers, I feel like we'll have that decision delayed probably tomorrow afternoon. Uh, I know there was one scheduled to come today, and there was one scheduled to come tomorrow. I feel like they'll make a decision and inform us of that by tomorrow afternoon. I feel confident in that. Now, to Mr. Councilman Oliver's point, just because they make that decision, who they're gonna use to make this repair, it may take four, five, six days, 10 days, whatever, and, 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 you know, this is not gonna be an easy task. I mean, you've got a soft cut asphalt, there's the, the, you know, if they, if they decide to go in and do the point repair, you've gotta navigate that, that landscape bed regardless. So it's, it's gonna take some time to get everything out there, their equipment, so on and so forth, so, but I do feel like a decision will be made in the next, you know, 48 hours or so.
How long will that take to repair, do you think?
Depending on what they do, if they, if they just go in and they dig, they excavate, and they do a point repair, just say where the lines, in my opinion, have, have separated, that could be done in a matter of hours. If they have to go in and saw cut and replace large portions of that line, it could take a couple of days.
So their water will be off for that amount of time?
Uh, you, well, here's the thing, while, while all that is being performed, while all that work is being performed, they will not, they, they should not discharge into it because there's not gonna, you know, there's a chance there's not gonna be pipe there for them to discharge into, that's correct. We will not physically cut it off unless we are, unless we, you know, unless we deem it necessary, but what we would do is we would require them not to use water in that period of time, however long it takes.
So this week is three weeks, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, I'd have to go back and verify the dates, but I know I've been working on it over 10 days, yes.
Okay. I kinda took a hard stand on it.
True.
And I still stand by that.
Sure.
Which is, instead of taking a business license, we turn off their water.
Sure. I completely understand.
Because it's affecting thousands of people, not five.
Right.
Thank you.
And it becomes, it does become an environmental hazard, absolutely, absolutely. So, but I will say, the area as of now is clean and disinfected. Now, that may change before, tonight, I mean, that may change in the next couple of hours. I don't feel like, well, I think it'll be sometime before it happens again. But I will say this, it's not, you know, what, what, what was done today is not the fix. What was done today will last, in my opinion, maybe 48 hours, if there are not, you know, running water, flushing water, and everything, you know, according.
And they're gonna have to have all of that. Um, like I said, I don't want to inconvenience nobody, I certainly don't want them, small business, I know they have it hard as it is, but I know something will have to be, have to be done. And I did check right before Kane, and I was told that you, you guys had already come out there and sanitized and washed down the streets, so, and because we got good sunshine, that it is drying up, but, um-
Yes.
If I was mean, mad awful this morning, I do apologize.
No, no, that's perfectly fine.
For my shortness and my brackness.
I developed a pretty tough skin a long time ago, loving the business.
Well, that's not knowing who I am.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. Every, and everyone, I, I will say this, everyone has tried to work together collectively to come to a resolution, and I think as long as we stay on that path, I think we will, you know, it, it will eventually get, get resolved. It's just, you know, they, they've gotta get those quotes, and like I said, they are kinda at the mercy of those companies as to when they can get to them, and so on and so forth, so.
Hypothetically, if this overflows tomorrow, what?
If this overflows tomorrow, we can go out and do exactly what we did today, which would, as I used the term the other day in the meeting, put lipstick on a pig. That's, that's basically what we're doing, we're just putting a Band-Aid on it, it's a temporary fix. The, the, the permanent solution is to figure out exactly what is wrong with that line and repair it. Whether that's replacing the 30-foot section or the entire distance, the entire length of the pipe. That's, that's the solution, and that's the fix.
Your department has gone above and beyond for the last couple of weeks, I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate it very much, and I would like to, you know, say that we have great employees that take their profession very seriously, and we've had multiple conversations and phone calls about this, and everyone has provided feedback and input, and so I wanna thank them. They work, you know, as long as water's on and the commode's flush, and you have heat in the winter, nobody really thinks about water, wastewater, and gas until you have an issue, so I'll, I'll, I'll say this, I commend my employees for the job they do. And I always like to reference Barry Bryant, in this, in this case. Barry Bryant made a statement, he was not the best coach in the world, he, he was just smart enough to surround himself with good coaches. And I'm kinda, I take that same opinion, I'm not the best manager in the world, I'm just smart enough to surround myself with good people, good employees, and so I'm thanking before me. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Anybody have any additional questions for him? And I know tomorrow, we'll be meeting with Public Works, myself, and the Building Department officials will be there, Mayor and some others to come to, to, come to Jesus meeting, as you would say, and put some timelines and some guidelines. We're gonna have to do that.
Sure, I agree, 100%.
Gonna have to do it.
Right, Mr. Simmons, that's what I was gonna ask, thank you for bringing that up. Just, if you will, by that time, have maybe checked in with the owner of those properties to have those updates about what the expectation is for a repair.
Yes.
That will help us determine what sort of guidelines we need to implement based on the ordinances we have, because that's the point we're at.
And in the conversations we've had, I do feel like that will happen either later today or tomorrow. I think we'll know something-
I think so.
More definitive by tomorrow. Before I go away, of course, I'll answer any questions you have, but does anybody have any questions about the change order? I know we've talked predominantly about Northwood Avenue.
Yeah, we asked those already.
Okay, we're good.
I did notice on the way here, the, someone has called the line location, because there's paint on the asphalt out there now. If y'all called that in, or maybe they've hired a contractor and they've made that call.
They, they may have.
But there is paint on the ground now.
That's, that's good news, that, to my knowledge, we've not called in to locate, to my knowledge, it's not been done by any of our crews, but I can, I can double check and verify that, so.
Okay, getting back to the change order, can I do a motion?
Motion.
What should I, Mr. Oliver's second amendment, Mr. Griffin, I'll make every motion. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, guys, if y'all are looking, we appreciate all of y'all so much for what you've done and what you're gonna continue to do until we get this resolved.
I just wanna say, I don't, I may, we don't want to see it be even as cruel.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely.
But they've got their crossroads.
True, absolutely.
For their, their side of it.
Yes, sir.
But the last thing we can say is just have to turn their water off, or whatever, that's, that's, and if we see that they're working, if I see they're working, I mean, I'm like, move the show.
And I will say that-
If they're trying as hard as they can to get something done, then they have to just sit on the thing.
Yeah, and I will say, that was the opinion of the, of the Health Department as And I will say that was the opinion of the Health Department as well. As long as they're working toward a resolution, you know, we have no issue. It does take time to get all this lined out and get the job, you know, get the task completed, so.
I look forward to your update tomorrow.
Sure.
And we see, and we can keep doing what we can do until we get to that point.
Yes, ma'am. We'll help in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
How are y'all doing? We have a couple items and then a couple of change orders. The first item is Item D, and that is a contract with Langston Service Group, and they will be installing and providing a compressor that was stripped by lightning at Broad River Regretion Center. The unit is still under warranty, and the replacement is compressor, refrigerant, and labor necessary to complete the job. The amount is $2,790.
And those are things, Bill, that are just outside of that. We've got a warranty, so why is there any cost at all?
The labor cost, I guess, does the parts, just not the labor, unfortunately. Next one is Item E, and it is a contract with J and M Fence, and this is to provide and install an entryway gate at Veterans Park in front of Memorial. This will remove the existing gate and labor and material for a new gate, and the amount is $12,500. We have two change orders on both the Handi Regretion Center. And I apologize for...
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
Why are we removing the gate and replacing it?
It's one of these older type gates, and with the renovation, we're just kind of moving to a more modern-looking gate. We've had some requests from the Memorial folks to replace this, and with the new addition, we're going to go ahead and replace it. But we will be using the old one somewhere else.
And is this funded through the bond issue that's funded that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Todd.
Sure, no problem at all. We have two change orders, and I was going to apologize about getting account numbers mixed up, and I apologize about that. The first one is change order number three, and this is for the renovation, the center itself. And this will be for adding new emergency smoke detectors, emergency lights in the electrical room, and adding some address numbers to the building. And the fire department was requesting this work be done, and that amount is $1,950.84.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am. For the first one, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, y'all want to go ahead and do a little now? Make a motion by Mr. Griffin? Second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion?
Thank you. The second one is change order number two, and this is for the locker room renovation part of it. And this is to upgrade a breaker for some new units, to paint the gutter downspouts, the slide structure, and the sun cell post, add some corner protectors, and a plastic drain grate, and add electrical wind data boxes. The amount of this change order is $7,636.
Can you give us a total amount for what that brings this project up to?
Say that again, please.
One, two, oh, eight, nine, twelve, eighty-five. And you remember those two projects are broken down into separate work order?
I do, but I'm trying to keep it tally of that.
Sure. I didn't give you the other one. The other one was $1,601.3.
No, it's here, it's here. You've got it.
My contact, I was going about three hours' sleep, so my eyes were, my wife had hip replacement yesterday, so. Motion on the change order.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Griffin, all in favor of the motion?
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Mary?
I have reviewed all of this afternoon. I have, we'll start with my change orders. The first one I have is a change order in the amount of $1,023.25. It is for the project that we're doing at 601 East Ridge Street, where we're updating and putting in some new restrooms. And we ended up adding a door frame to this project, and this is the difference between just a door and a door frame, is the $1,023.25.
Can I get a motion?
Someone?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Is this, okay, so this project, again, let's go back to the question Mike we asked, Mr. Jordan, what does that bring the total amount of this project to, and what did we budget for it?
What did you budget for it? I will have to verify this tomorrow, but this project was in the six, I think it was $63,000 is what it was.
Does it include the cost of the property and the renovation?
No, no, no. This is just, this is just our remodel project where we finished out a space and installed restrooms.
Okay, good. That's an important distinction. So, yeah, what was the total cost of that and where are we in that range?
I'm thinking it was $63,000. I'm not positive what the total was initially. And so this would just add a thousand. This is our only change order we've had on this project, so. So it's just going to add $1,000 to what the original, I think it was $63,000.
Do you mind following up with us on that very thing?
I would be happy to.
All right. Okay, move back, motion? Okay. Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion?
Okay, I'm making myself a note, send that to you. The second one is the project we had at 714 East Alabama. And this is where we had, this is not, this is, we already purchased these buildings. And this is for us, where we went in and we basically put, finished out the roof to be waterproof. We painted the building, we basically gutted the building and made it waterproof, honestly. And this original, I think, was $79,000. And so I'm requesting to add to this. When we originally did it, we didn't realize how much old pipe and conduit was in the floor and the ceiling and on the outside and the inside. So before we painted it, we requested them to remove all the old piping, and the cost of this, labor cost, was $2,128. We wanted to do that before we painted, so we could have a better finish.
Is that exterior?
Exterior, mhm. And some of it was, removal was interior, but they also removed what was on the outside. There was an old meter base, old gas meters, a lot of old, oh, this is an older building.
Is that the first change order on this one?
Correct. This is the first and only change order. We are actually finished with the project, so this is the only change order.
And this will complete it?
This will complete it.
Good deal.
I'll vote for it. This will complete both of them.
Okay, can I get a motion? No more questions. Motion. Motion by Mr. Hubert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor?
Thank you. I also have Item F. This is for a resolution to approve a contract at the fence for $26,000. This is for our substation out of Shoals Creek. That you, if you've driven by our substation out of Shoals Creek, you can see where it's getting updated. And so we have expanded the grounds and the footprint of it. So this is, we tore out the old fence, and this is to install a new fence around the updated substation.
Same kind of fence, Mary?
Same kind of fence, just a regular chain link fence with a valve at the top. A couple of gates and a walk-in gate. And my next item is Item G. And this is a resolution to approve a contract with Shoals Riverhead Door to replace a door, garage door for $3,341.87. At our Johnson Products building, we have a garage door that's broken, and so this is to replace the broken garage door at that, on that building.
Do you mind reminding us how you're going to use that facility?
Currently, it is being used for our AMI, where we're storing all our AMI meters and everything. And when we get finished with our AMI project, we have a lot of options that we're looking at, but we don't have anything 100% certain what it's going to be used for yet. We have a lot of options, but I don't, I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be used for. We haven't, we haven't made that, honestly. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Todd?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few items here. First one is a change order number one from Alexander Land Surveying. We are working in the street park doing a drainage project out on Milford Court, and we're needing a change in easement. This is coming as use a change order because it is professional services, and we were able to attach to the existing contract to be able to pay them for the additional work they had to give for this easement. For, change order amount is for $375.
Can I get a motion for the change orders? Y'all have any questions for? Motion by Mr. Griffin?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hubert, all in favor?
Second change order with Johnson and Associates. This is for the Rickwood Road Project. This is, the change order is for the engineering costs associated with some movement and relocation of pedestrian crosswalks with, because of the railroad crossings. This has gone through state approval. Since it is money for the NPO, it is 80/20 money that we're looking at here, that this will be, eventually be reimbursed for. But state has approved this change order now, as before y'all, for those services to make those changes needed to make the crosses.
I would like to remind everybody that this project is 11 years old. So it has come to fruition, and we are grateful for it. However, we could see the billing cycle on this go well into the future. So just keep that in mind.
Thanks, Grace.
We have been there and done that lately.
What was that, what was that amount?
The amount, sorry, the amount was for $45,232.
So even best-case scenario, we're only going to be reimbursed 80% of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So just everybody somewhere aware.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Someone?
Motion by Mr. Griffin? Second by Mr. Hubert, all in favor of the motion?
All right. Next is a contract with Weisner. It is for that same property that, for the change order out on Milford Court there. It is, there has been a change in ownership, and we were to be able to get this easement, needing to go through, anybody that holds a mortgage needs to go through that mortgage company. We require their services to do any background checks to make sure we have all the right people to secure the easement that is needed.
Change in one ownership?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for? Okay.
The next item is a contract with Shark Freedom America. This is for work to clean out a detention basin in the, in our city code, our subdivision regs, we, any drainage basin that's over an acre foot, the city is responsible for maintenance of. And so this is a, with this being underground, city forces can, we do not have the equipment needed to be able to clean this out. So this has gone through Public Works and Finance Committee vote. So I bring it forward for a contract with Shark Freedom America for the amount of $27,500 to clean out that detention basin, that underground detention basin.
Probably a crazy question to ask right now, since we've only got 15 minutes to go. Could we save money as a city by having equipment to do this type thing ourselves?
There are, there are not, there's not too many underground facilities in Florence that have that. There are other means we have. This is one of the first ones in this shopping center that had the underground facilities. Since then, we have taken different steps to be able to alleviate us from having to be responsible for these different maintenance agreements, so.
Fair enough.
And Todd, didn't you, in the Finance Committee meeting, it's only every three years that we have to address this in any way?
At best, yes. That's why it's Fix A. And really, depending on the longer there's not even more work going on, the sediment, I mean, there's, you look over in that area, there's a lot of concrete, there's a lot of asphalt, there's not a lot of dirt. So, you know, it doesn't, we should not, hopefully that frequency can be even further out than that as we go on. And then the last is a contract with White Lynn and Collins. This is for the construction and engineering services for the project, the tap project on Bradshaw Drive. So this is a tap project. Once again, the money matched on this is 80/20 to a certain percentage that we put in. This is for the inspection in service to make sure what gets put in is inspected according to state specs.
And this is a reimbursement?
Yes, ma'am. It's, we will pay to put these costs upfront, and then we will put in the reimbursement for 80%. Yes, ma'am. Up to a certain, up until the amount of the tap funds.
All right. You have any more questions for? All right. Thank you, Todd. Todd, I will be calling you tomorrow about property on Garfield.
All right. Ms. Simmons, President Simmons asked me to come today to, I guess, show you all together the app that we have built in planning with regards to the new polling places. This is only for city polling places. And of course, I'll send the link out to you all to test drive, and I really appreciate those that gave me feedback. We've also sent it out to just a few people in the community, other city employees, just to have them tested on various devices, and we've gotten feedback from that, testing on a phone, on a tablet, et cetera. So we've been making some updates as we go along. Essentially, the app is address-based, so let's just put in our current location. As you can see, as you begin to type, wanting any other apps, it will start to populate addresses. So what the app will do is it will zoom in on that particular address, and it will then display the district that that particular address is in, and also the precinct name and the address for the precinct. So if someone lived here at 110 West College Street, they would know that they are in District 1, that they vote at Hangar Recreation Center, which is located at 1105 Beale Street. And then we have a directions link where they can add in their particular address. So in this case, 110 West College Street, and use their phone or their car's GPS to get them to their polling place. This is, like I said, this app is address-based, it is not name-based. And so that was a question that we received. Secretary of State's office has one that's name-based, and you can also get your polling location for state and county. We do have some city residents that vote at a different location. And it just so happens that one of the, one of the people that we asked to test drive was one of those voters, that they voted a different location for county. So we want to make sure that when we release this link through the city's website, that we make it very clear that this is only for municipal elections. Now, can voters get information other places about where they vote? Of course they can. They can get it through the Secretary of State's website, they can call the city. But we wanted to not only use the data that we have and see its capabilities, but also have just one other piece of technology, if you will, for voters to find out where they vote. I know the mayor's office gets a lot of calls, so they, of course, will have access to this as well. Anybody will have access to it. But, you know, the city clerk's office, you know, Bob could have it out, you know, to his other employees for use if someone were to call.
Has this been launched, Melissa?
We have not launched it live yet. There were a couple of things we wanted to do. First of all, I wanted you all to see it before we went live with it. And we also wanted to have some folks in the field that were testing it just to see that it was performing the way that it should.
So the anticipated launch date may be?
So after today, and let me, let me do this real quick. When you, when you first encounter the link, just like with our other mapping apps that we have, there is a disclaimer, if you will. We want to change this disclaimer to specifically talk about that this is for municipal elections only. So, and they will actually have to click through and agree to that, so we can ensure that, that people will see it. They might click through without reading it. But we do, in light of our field tester who votes at a different location for county and state elections, you know, we want to try to make it as clear as possible. There, I mean, you can zoom in. Get back here.
So about that launch date?
So, really, you know, we can do it at any time. I mean, we could, you know, pick a nice round number and say May 1st.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Let's do that, so people will know and have an opportunity to try to figure out if it was too late for them to be voting in.
Okay.
May 1st it is.
All right. Sounds good to me, May 8th.
May 8th, you're right. All right, that it?
Any questions? Okay, great.
Thank you very much for coming. Ms. Musgrove?
Good afternoon. I just have one item on the agenda to discuss at the work session, and that is Item 12A, and it is an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Alabama Fiber Network. And I sent everybody an email with a link to the website. This is part of the, I think they call it the Middle Mile Initiative that the state is doing. This, Alabama Fiber Network is a corporation formed by a number of electric cooperatives and other public entities, and this is all part of the state's effort. and other public entities, and this is all part of the state's effort to, and some, you know, someday have internet available to every, you know, all sixty-seven counties and everywhere in the state, you know, aimed at the rural areas. And this franchise is identical, or substantively identical, to the other fiber franchises that the city has granted and has in place right now. So, any questions?
And it's what city right away, all of it?
Yes, that's correct, yep. And also, Ms. President, there were two resolutions that I thought were going to be on the agenda, and they're not, and I have it with me if you want to add them.
Okay, tell, tell what they are.
These are the resolutions for the Reverb Hotel that were discussed last work session. So, um, so anyway, I've got them.
Good afternoon, the, the liquor man is here. I've got two resolutions, twelve D and twelve E. One is a resolution to approve an application for alcohol beverage license by Buffalo Rock Company for Wholesale Beer and Wine Distributor, doing business as Buffalo Rock Company, located at one-eleven Oxwell Road, Birmingham, Alabama, sponsored by me. And of course, Buffalo Rock is Pepsi product, all of that stuff. This is dealing with, I think, spiked tea and some of that stuff in there, so they're, you're getting into that area, so. And then the other one I have is a resolution to approve an application.
Wait, I'm so sorry, Bob, can you help explain that a little bit differently? I was reading it as you were talking, and I don't think I understand it.
Are they going to do business in Florence?
Yes.
Okay.
As?
They're located, they're, corporate office located.
In Birmingham?
Birmingham, they're the ones that applied for it.
Okay, and then they will break it into individual stores?
Right.
They will apply to sell their teas?
Well, no, I mean, they're, they're not going to apply for a different store, they, they will, this will be added to their city Florence business license.
Okay.
That allows.
It's a new product.
New product, is all it says.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like tea.
I was like, I was reading, I was like, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't make that clear. Uh, the second one is a resolution to approve an application for a special event, licensed on premises liquor beer and wine by Gwendolyn Woods, and doing a business as Cabaret, and this can be located at seven oh two Veterans Drive, which is the Coliseum to take place on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Questions? That's it. Thank you all.
Okay, I have several to bring to you. First one is a resolution to approve a contract for services between the city of Florence and Singy River Media Group. They are the ones that do our Spirit of Freedom every year, and that contract is for twenty-seven That's L. Any questions?
Thank you a lot, Mayor.
Went from twenty-five to twenty-seven five. And we've had our, we've had our first meeting.
And I have a follow-up on that, being that that's going to be the, I've been hearing a lot about, it's going to be the country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, and so some celebrations are going up. Was there any discussion?
There was not any discussion, but Kathy, Kathy's our Spirit of Freedom lady, so I assure you she will take that consideration, is that right, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? M is a resolution to approve an agreement to advertise and promote the city of Florence at the Billy Reed Shindig, and that is for ten thousand dollars, and that's what we did the last time they, they had to land, I think it's in October.
It is, I think it's really important to note on that one, we had a lot of back and forth about it because we were really adamant that it be a city-facing, very public, community event, and they agreed to allow it to be the event in Wilson Park that is open to the community, and that was the only way it was, I, I couldn't even consider giving it support without that.
Absolutely. Any more questions? Next is N, is a resolution to approve a contract with Party Never Hinge Rental for twenty-one, two thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and ten cents. This is for the equipment, materials, incidentals needed for a rental, rental of tents and chairs for our annual Memorial Day ceremony at Douglas Park.
I'd just like to point out, that is not my coverage.
Okay. The next one, Ms. Simmons, this is C, do you want to do it, or you want me to?
You can just go ahead and do it.
All right, number C is a resolution to amend boundaries of the downtown Florence Arts and Entertainment District to include the Hollins Bar and Grill located on Pine Street, and that, that location is just behind us on the corner.
Where's the contiguous area for that? Doesn't it have to be contiguous, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's a Billy question.
Billy? Currently, currently the district goes, runs along the sidewalk on that side of Pine Street.
Right, right there, mhm.
Yes, oh, yes, on the south, I mean, the west side of Pine Street. So the restaurant's already contiguous to it, that we just encircled the restaurant to bring the whole building into it.
Okay, so it's, it loops the street, that, the building, and then back up?
That's correct.
Because currently, the outside area was not a part of, is that right?
Well, the sidewalk in the front was, but they have an entrance on the, on the side and a walkway and whatnot, and this just makes sure to get the entire building into the entertainment district, so there are no questions about alcohol outside the building in a special blue cup.
Did they request this?
Yes.
Good deal.
And he, a couple times.
All right, the last item I have is item F, and it's a resolution authorizing a partial release of funds from the escrow fund established pursuant to the escrow agreement between the city of Florence, the Lauderdale County Agricultural Center Authority, and the abstract entitled Company of Florence based on a percentage of the completion of the Agricultural Center sewer extension project. You may be aware that we had an application, co-application for, for a sewer to EDA, and we required, we are not out any money, but we required the ag authority to have an escrow of three-point-eight million dollars, and that state in escrow, and it gained interest, and they are entitled to all that once it's completed. We met recently with Heath Johnston, and Heath, Heath King from NACOD, and we determined that the project is approximately ninety-five percent complete. What we're asking is for two-point-nine million of that to be released, that's based on seventy-five percent, with understanding we'll come back to you again because we found out that the one-point-six million is coming from EDA shortly, and we'll sit down again and bring that forward. And we think this is appropriate, and those funds are actually, as my understanding, held with First Southern Bank and an outside accounting firm of Norville and Scott. Any questions?
How will they, I mean, I get it that this is part of the legality of it, but do they have plans for this money, was this at their request?
This money is, is.
It was their money to begin with?
It's their money to begin with. We just required them to have this to be sure the project was completed as agreed upon. So technically, we could have released, I think in the contract it was for twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five percent, and that had not been done. So we just learned after we agreed to this, we're at about ninety-five percent, so hopefully we'll come back to you shortly.
For the remainder?
That's right.
And it's the amount plus interest?
Uh, it's two-point-nine, one-eight something, I don't have the exact figure, plus the interest in it. I don't have the amount of interest, but they were entitled to interest, whatever it is.
If you'll let us know that, please, full the amount, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Musgrove, those two resolutions, we do need to get those ahead of this, okay, listen.
Do you want me to discuss them, or just give them to the slide and add them?
We can discuss them.
So there are two resolutions, and one has to do with property tax, a property tax abatement that the Industrial Development Board approved, and, and the abatement of transactional taxes during the construction phase of the hotel project. And it, it remains unchanged from last week, it's, it's still the same. The, the second resolution has to do with Sweet Home Alabama State Tax Incentive Program and that the developer is applying for, and we made several changes to this, and I, I don't know if y'all have had time, I sent out a red line copy showing the changes, and Mr. Shipper has reviewed them, and, and we finalized it. And basically, the, from a substantive standpoint, the change is, is that last, the original resolution stated that the city pledged one-hundred percent of all the sales and lodging tax revenue received from the hotel project, once it was open and running, to the Sweet Home Alabama incentive program. And the new, the revised resolution that would be on the agenda today says that the city pledges twenty percent of the city's sales and lodging taxes that are generated by the hotel project.
Mr. Musgrove?
Yes, ma'am.
As I recall, we had, there was a, we were given a deadline, a March thirty-first deadline, and today is April first?
Correct. That's right, but that's, as my understanding is, that the, the developers still wants to have these approved, so.
Was that deadline not real?
I, I don't know, that's not, I'm sorry, I'm not. That's not part of mine.
I just didn't know why it came up if it's past that, I was.
Yeah, this is Mr. Shipper.
Yeah, if I may, as I understand it, and I haven't talked with, with anybody. Yes, I, I, the client, Mr. Sack has reported that, that the state would be willing to accept it out of time, a day or two late, and he's going to drive it down to Montgomery if, if you all seek it to execute the resolutions. So he, he, it is, it is very much a priority for him still, so he's still very hopeful that they will consider it, even though it's going to be a day or two late, so. But, and the twenty percent threshold from the city had been the intent all along, so, so we, Billy and I were certainly in agreement on the line with.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Shipper.
Mr. Musgrove, I appreciate the way that you highlighted that, to send it to us, because we were at a short time, and it was so easy to read. Thank you so much for that.
My pleasure, glad that, glad we got it finished in time, thank you.
Thank you, so we'll be, that will become on the regular agenda, G and H. Okay, that's all, we will take a five-minute break, and then we'll